The order will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Salz and the invocation by Dr. Brantley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come at this hour of the day with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We pray, oh God, for your grace and your tender mercies as we encounter turbulence, weather forecast. Oh God, you made us and you know all about us. You know exactly what is in store for us and what we shall encounter.
Yes.
We pray, oh God, that you would be with us and give us the understanding that whatever betides us, that you are with us because you promised that you would never leave us, not forsake us. And we pray, oh God, that you would give us strength and give us courage and give us understanding and let us not be fearful in these times of turbulent forecast, but make us strong and trust in you and give us the faith that you promised that we should have, oh God, and make us better and stronger tomorrow than we are today. This is our prayer and all God's people say.
Amen.
Amen.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Been thinking of this song, "Well, I've seen fire and I've seen rain." Seems like the last little bit's been interesting. We turn it over to Chief Frank Edwards to update us on the weather situation.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Probably for the last at least five days, we've been closely monitoring the storm. We've been doing our state conference calls with the sheriff's office, the towns in the conference calls and planning and then obviously we have opened our emergency operations center 24 hours a day this morning as of 8:00 a.m. We have gone to what's called OPCON Level One, which is the highest level of alert for the emergency operations center. The shelter should be open as we speak at noon. Sheriff's Office is providing security at the shelter. The bus transportation routes should be started as of right now, 12:00 noon. They will be going to or by all of the fire stations as well as Hardyville Police Department and Levy to pick up any folks who don't have transportation to the shelter. So again, those are all in process. Regarding the last conference call we had with this morning with the state at 9:00 a.m. and there'll be another one this afternoon, but as of this morning, the storm's winds were at 165 miles an hour. The storm was essentially stationary but is expected to shift northwest tonight and then accelerate northward as it gets into the Gulf Stream. There were saying as again this morning that the storm should be offshore of South Carolina sometime around Wednesday night into Thursday, approximately 50 miles. But again, I'll caution everybody that may be watching that the slightest wobble of that storm would put it right on our coast. So again, what they're saying now, what's actually going to happen could be two different things. The other thing that will happen is the wind field is expected to expand out to about 90 miles from the eye of the storm as it moves northward. They're calling for us to start to experience tropical force winds starting Wednesday afternoon through Thursday. Right now, there's a 64% chance of those tropical force winds in Beaufort. There's a 9% chance of hurricane force winds in Beaufort during that time. The storm surge is expected right now to be between four to six feet of inundation along the coast and in the waterways with rainfall still in the four to six inch range here. And the state did their declaration, emergency declaration the other day and again, as you know, the governor made his evacuation orders last evening. At this point, from what I heard this morning at the conference call, there's still no federal declaration. So again, we're still just operating off of the state declaration. I'll take any questions or...
Chief, if, Mr. Chairman, I think it's important to mention too that once those tropical storm force winds are reached, is it 37 miles per hour, chief, or 39, that emergency personnel are no longer permitted to respond?
Yes, sir. When the winds get so high, our ambulances, our fire trucks, we pull them off the road because of the winds and particularly the ambulances because they're so top-heavy with the box that for our people's safety, we pull them off the road and certainly once those winds die down, and as winds are sustained, I mean, if you get small gusts, we'll still respond, but once they're sustained at that, then we'll stop responding. But once they die down, then we'll continue with our responses. So we, for lack of a better term, hold the calls in our dispatch center and then once we start responding, we'll get to those in priority order.
And our shelter officially open today at noon?
Yes, sir. That should be open as we speak right now at noon at the Ridgeland High School complex. Red Cross is there, Department of Social Services and DEHEC are all in partnership in the EOC and onsite opening the shelter. Obviously, I don't know what any numbers might be as to who was waiting there. We were starting to get phone calls this morning from folks about the shelter. I know Beaufort County's getting a bunch of phone calls about the location of the shelter. So again, I suspect a fair crowd will be moving there throughout the day today.
I don't see the town of Ridgeland here at our meeting, but I just want to emphasize and I know this is ongoing and don't defer anything by me making this statement, but communication between the town of Ridgeland, the city of Hardyville and the county working cohesively through the EOC, make sure we're working together, communicating together, same messaging, we're participating on calls for the benefit of everybody in Jasper is crucial that we all stay on the same page.
No, we're doing that again. Ridgeland and Hardyville have been on the conference calls in the morning. Hardyville has a representative in the EOC now. We started doing that last year, so we have that link between them. Hardyville is ramping up their municipal EOC, I don't know when, noon today. So they'll be having their municipal EOC open today at noon now.
Okay. Chief, you, we have an emergency plan?
Can you define that better? I'm not sure. We have a county emergency operations plan which lays out all the departments, responsibilities, all the major functions that we have to take actions on. Here's a copy of it right here.
Okay. My concern is if we have an emergency plan, how is that plan communicated to the community so that the community will be informed and know exactly what their services are available to them?
This plan is more of an internal plan for our internal operations. Regarding what the community needs to do, we do that through our press releases, through our NICSIL pushes, through our Facebook posts of what we want and expect the community to do relative to evacuation, preparing. We've been sending messages out all week of preparing for the storm, have your plan in place, have food supplies ready, medicines, all of that kind of stuff. We've been sending that out and then we sent out yesterday about the evacuation order and about the where we're picking up people as far as the transportation route today as well. We did two live Facebook streams yesterday for the Latino community and those are posted as well on our Facebook page. So that's kind of how we notify the public.
Chief, also through our school district as well, Dr. Brantley, through the school closings, that message is getting out too, but we do have, and I believe, Chief, you probably will do this because we've done it in the past, is make sure that our fire stations are open for residents to come to in case of an emergency to get assistance throughout the rural part of our community.
They currently are not, we had no direct plan to do that at every station, just the current stations we staff, but the stations are available now for the transportation pickup to take them to the shelter, starting at noon today. And they'll run until 8:00 p.m. every night to run the buses.
Even those persons who are bedridden and cannot...
Now, those folks who have special medical needs, there's a special number that they can call for the state to gain, to be transported to a facility that can handle special medical needs patients. Our shelter cannot handle special medical needs folks, so they would have to go through the state process to do that.
Do they have this information? How do they...
We have published the number. I can make sure we continue to publish that number in our press releases and our notices that we send out.
And those people, they started transporting them yesterday. They were transporting people with medical need and can't, they were taking them to Macon.
The hospitals, the hospitals and nursing homes and those places, when the governor issued his order last night, that was their trigger between last night and today and continuing through the day to evacuate patients and move them to inland facilities as well, as Ms. Clark indicated. Obviously, the Ridgeland Nursing Home is not in the flood zones, they don't have to, they're not relocating, but...
They're boring it up right now.
But some of the hospitals, or actually all the hospitals that I'm aware of, Beaufort Memorial and Coastal Carolina have, can and have applied for and received exemptions to not evacuate, but what they still have to do is draw their census, their population down. When we talked to Coastal Carolina night before last, they were down to like 14 patients at Coastal Carolina. So that's what the hospitals do.
They've already drawn it down.
Probably even more, yes.
I talked with Joe this morning.
And the new, the new emergency room, the TideWatch emergency room that they just opened, they will be closing that completely, shifting all of their resources to Coastal Carolina until the winds and all die down, then they'll go back and open up the TideWatch ER portion.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Etheridge.
To answer Dr. Brantley's question, I think that community communications is going to be a big thing in any time we have a hurricane. The community itself communicates...
I agree. Community has to have the information in order to disseminate. You cannot disseminate what you don't have.
I understand, but most, what we've already advertised, I would think that somebody in every community would have it because there's been a lot of communication from us already, from the county already. But now, no matter how hard you try to...
I mean, I did some, I did also send some communications, I guess it would have been Saturday, maybe Friday or Saturday, to the family and transitions folks and they have a lot of roots in the community. I haven't heard back from them to know whether they received it or not. You know, they didn't confirm that they received it, so you know, I gave them an update on the storm and told them that if, at that time, if we did an evacuation, that the locations of pickup would be the same as before, but I haven't heard back from them that they received that.
Between the news media, social media and access online from the emergency management website with South Carolina, there's a lot of ways to access it and plus the public press release notices that are going out via radio and TV. I mean, I don't know, there's a lot of outlets to get information out there through...
And just so you know too, we have reached out to Ms. Malfris from the chamber. She's ready to push stuff out to the businesses.
We're already doing that.
Okay. We've got Mr. Lucas coming in from the county today. He should be there now to start being kind of the business liaison to communicate with the businesses. So he should be in the EOC right now to do that.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Anything special?
One question. Okay, when you start evacuating, would Columbia be a good place? Because I noticed they're shutting down, making it one way, going that side.
Yeah, you mean as far as out of the storm's path?
Right.
Columbia, yes, ma'am. That would be a good place. I will caution that it's, with 26 being contraflowed, I mean, there's going to be a lot of traffic coming out of Charleston and headed that way, so...
278 and 321 will probably be the best.
I was gonna say, the backroads may be easier for you than actually going to 26 from here.
Chief, I would say that we can say that now, but if that storm wavers some and comes, I remember Matthew, was it? Charlotte, North Carolina, you know, in that area, they got hurricane worse than we did.
Well, and the other thing that happens is once there's an accident, let's say on 95 or 26, then everybody's smartphone starts routing them other ways. And so 278, 321 also start to clog up because of people rerouting.
And we, you know, I understand nothing is really safe in the area when a hurricane is out there because we have no control over God's work. He moves it whichever way he chooses to. He can turn it all the way around and send it back to where it came from. So that's understood, but just with common knowledge and common sense, we try to protect ourselves as much as we can and move somewhere we think is kind of safe.
Yes. I will also tell you again, we've been in conversation with Levy Fire Department about what we're doing, what they're doing. So again, we've had that conversation as well.
Yeah, he's been out putting out the information.
All right. Mr. Fulgham, I understand you have some information on traffic patterns and...
No, sir, I'm afraid I don't. I was going to suggest that you may want to hear from Mr. Benjamin about the jail and operations of evacuation of the jail so that you know and that anyone who may have a loved one in our custody there will know what's happening.
If you're not going to mention it, I'll mention it. I heard that the Jasper Station Road was quite passable. I understand that it's quite a challenge down around Sun City as far as getting around and...
Yeah, telling them on TV all morning.
All right. Mr. Benjamin.
Good morning. Right now, we evacuated this morning about 7:30, quarter to 8:00. We evacuated, so far we evacuated 52 inmates, males and females. We have a remaining 23 that's left. We had neighboring counties assisting us, Hampton, Allendale, and we're waiting for Dorchester to pick up the remaining three. I sent about 14 staff up there to stay with our inmates. They went up to Alvin, that's Glen and Columbia, so that's where we at right now. I just received a phone call just now, I have another neighboring county that's about to evacuate and they're going to need our assistance, so I'll be assisting them as well. But right now, we're still at the, I still have staff at the jail. I'm gonna keep them there until once the storm come, then I'll shut it down. I'm gonna be working with Colliton, so any remaining arrests that expire during that, they'll be taking them to Colliton, just in case if we can't get out or they can't get in. So that's where we at right now. Yes, we spoke with some of the judges. They've been working with that this morning, release as much as they can. Ms. Bostick just released one for me for family court, so we've been on top of that as well. So I have one female that she has a very mental, some highly mental health issues, so we're gonna try to keep her by. Okay.
Keep her what?
We're gonna keep her with us until the storm go through because we still have some staff there.
So you will, you'll have persons left at the correctional center during the storm?
Yes, excluding myself, we'll be there. We'll be there until the storm come. Now, we all know that we have a tendency of flooding, so once that flood come, anything else, any other new arrest, we're gonna be working with Colliton, Colliton Detention Center will be accepting them for us.
Well, if it's a danger for the inmates, why isn't it a danger for the staff?
I've sent 14 staff up there, but right now, till the storm come. I mean, I can, I also can always go to that plan too, but then I gotta also keep understanding of any law enforcement, if they have any prior arrests up, leading up to the storm.
See, see, okay.
Yeah, that's all. Just trying to work together with everybody. Okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Cameraman, you heard that our clerk, Coit, came in on a holiday just to relieve somebody so like we didn't have to deal with it. The, we have the mayor of Hardyville and the chief of police of Hardyville, anything y'all want to ask or contribute?
I have a question I want to ask them, just curious. I saw about 30 emergency resorts, looked like trailers, one round looked like horse trailers because they got the little small window in this park on the city property. What is it?
Good afternoon, county council. Just to let you know, I was contacted Thursday that FEMA trailers were being moved to Florida and they wanted to stage an area and they needed a field to stage those. And so they asked me if they could put them behind City Hall and then in turn contacted our city manager to get the approval. They approved to put those trailers there and then transport them down onto Florida as they needed them. So that was the reason for them being in Hardyville.
So they're, you can live in those trailers?
They're FEMA trailers is all I can tell you. I don't know, I think they're actually where FEMA goes down, starts meeting people that has destruction of property and starts doing the paperwork and stuff. I think that's what those trailers are for.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. This time I would recognize Andrew Fulgham for a resolution.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you had this resolution well in advance. Unfortunately, we've become a matter of routine of putting these together. This is catered to this storm. Mr. Tetter did draft it. Did you have any corrections or changes you wanted to make?
If I might, Mr. Chairman, I drafted this at the beginning of Friday as I was leaving town. I would like to have leave to update just a couple of items in it to reference the mandatory evacuation ordered by the governor in here and the evacuation of Beaufort, for Beaufort and Jasper Counties. And I just had a question I had that the high winds were supposed to come through on Tuesday, September 3rd originally. Is that still the expectation or is it September 4th?
Whatever Wednesday is.
So I would change it to Wednesday, the 4th instead of Tuesday, just minor, those two little minor changes in there. Everything else would stay the same.
I have a trivial logistics question. Is Ms. Williams available?
Who?
Bishop.
She, she is on standby. She is available. Yes, sir.
I was gonna see if we needed a motion to make Mr. Tetter the acting clerk of council or something like that.
Might as well. Do I get extra pay?
Mr. Chairman...
You get an extra pay?
That would help. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have to disrupt her or her family if you did that. It'd be a kind thing to do.
There, a motion to...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question regarding the resolution, the proclamation here, number 10, that the county council may suspend or limit non-emergency activities and prohibit public assemblies. What does that mean?
I gotta find your page just one second.
It's at the bottom of the page, number 10.
This is verbatim out of our adopted and state-approved emergency action plan that's in one of our ordinances. This is what our ordinance says. I didn't make any of this up. It's been part of section 955. It's to prevent people from putting themselves in danger and having our law enforcement or others having to deal with things where it could otherwise be avoided.
If I was having a car show at the farmer's market and there were going to be 200 people there...
Suppose you wanted service, you would prohibit that as well? That's an assembly.
Wanted what?
Service.
What kind of service?
A religious service.
A religious service? Yeah, that you'd be putting yourself out in harm's way. You don't, we don't want them together.
So you would prohibit that?
As I understand, this is a recitation of the powers. It's not something that we are doing. We would have to convene another emergency meeting if we were going to...
I doubt if anybody wants to pray for the safety during the storm, we're gonna say, no, you can't do it. I don't think this is even an issue. I mean, goodness gracious.
You would have a very hard time getting a vote out of me to prohibit a public assembly...
You would have a very hard time to get anybody to publicly assemble in a storm to pray to.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, I think in other jurisdictions, believe it or not, they have groups that rally to have hurricane parties and things like that. That's what I think this is referenced in.
That's the essence of it. Okay.
I don't know anybody up here that's opposed to that, but maybe I better hush.
Somebody got to help him.
All right. Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman?
I would, oh, go ahead. Well, I see Mr. Morris is here. I didn't know if there's any information from the sheriff's perspective on lane reversals or transportation or law enforcement things, countywide. I'd give them an opportunity to talk.
We're just assisting Hardyville Highway Patrol with whatever they need. We are in the process of ramping up, keeping in mind the amount of time that it's going to entail. But with the mandatory evacuation of Zone A, we are ramping up and increasing our staffing to cover that and like y'all, waiting to see what the update brings.
About the lane reversals, I know there's been some conflicting information on 278, for example.
What I got from the captain of Highway Patrol about an hour ago was they're only reversing 278 off of the island up to Moss Creek. Once they get them to Moss Creek, they're gonna put them down into the three lane until they get to McGarvey's and then they'll go back to the two lane through Jasper unless they see the need to modify that plan. They have troopers stationed all up and down 278, monitoring as well as I-95. When I came in this morning, there were some up at 278 and Morgan Dollar. So they've gotten stationed throughout the county along the evacuation routes, monitoring to see if we need to alter what we're doing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
First of all, do I hear a motion...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept this resolution with the necessary correction that Mr. Tetter has pointed out in two places.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do I hear a further motion to name David L. Tetter as acting clerk to council until the storm passes by?
I also move, Mr. Chairman, Clerk Tetter has a good ring to it.
All right.
Do I have to put the minutes to...
We asked for today.
Mr. Chairman, just one final thing. The chief has the EOC number, that telephone number that people can call in for assistance? If he, if he could share that with us all?
All right. Give it to us, chief.
Yes, sir. The phone number is 843-726-4421. It's extension 1026. And if it's somebody who has a special medical need, we can refer them to the state, give them the state number.
Extension what?
1026.
Chief, we're gonna force feed that through NICSIL?
Yes, sir. We'll put this out.
We need to...
Because we're gonna put out a NICSIL after, right now, to say that we've done the local declaration and all that, so we'll make sure that's all in there.
And Shelley, you go post that on the county website and do we, Harry, how does Hardyville pick up that kind of information with y'all's NICSIL? Do we have to send that to y'all or, I just want to make sure we're getting everybody the information?
So I'll get Hardyville's and we'll get Jasper County's as well.
Good.
Also, council, I just wanted to let you know that over the last few days, we've been, we have talked and met with all the schools on a regular basis to brief them on the storm and to help them make decisions on being open or not. Obviously, it's not an issue for the next couple of days, but, but we have been meeting with all the schools and working with the schools. And again, they're in our EOC because their buses are used for the transportation pickup for the residents, so.
Did we vote on that last motion?
Did we vote on the motion yet?
Yes.
Okay.
You, the clerk?
The clerk was asking me, I was like, he's already messing up, his first day on the job.
It's a probationary appointment.
Yes. You're not looking good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask one other question, please. How many zones do we have in Jasper County?
Two.
Jasper County has two evacuation zones, Zone A and Zone B. You should have the map on your screens that show that. Zone A is the red, which is essentially everything, not exactly, but essentially everything east of 95 with the exception of a little bit up the Sav... of 95 with the exception of a little bit up the Savannah River that you can see there, as well as a little bit up off of Morgan Dollar and was it Telefine? I'm not 100% sure of all the creeks and stuff yet, but up that way to the west of 95. And then we have evacuation Zone B, which is a continuation, I guess, of the Telefine up in the northern part of the county and then south of Ridgeland, south of 336, and up through Robertville. But we're not doing Zone B evacuation at this time. We didn't feel like it was appropriate. Zone A is all we're doing right now.
Thank you.
And if people don't know where, if they live into a zone or not, certainly they can look at the big maps here, but if you go to the South Carolina Emergency Management website, you can type in your address and it'll tell you whether you are or are not in the zone.
Come on up, man. Just sort of suggestion, Mr. Salz brought up about the 39 mile an hour thing and the NICSIL that you just mentioned. It might not be a bad idea to remind people that once it hits 39 miles an hour, that there will be no emergency services because I, that, of all the information that's gone out, I don't remember that.
Yep.
And that's a key point, so.
We actually had an incident on 95 when, I think it was Matthew, where a family's car was flooded and actually, Brandon Fowler, Judge Malfress's son, who was stationed here with the National Guard, actually went out with his team to save him. So, I mean, that's...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
They're on a different deal than the state and local.
Yeah, but if we emphasize that point through all the media...
It's very important.
Very important.
It's also my understanding that it's the practice or policy to shut down bridges over water once it reaches 40 miles an hour so that you couldn't cross the bridge to Hilton Head, the Broad River, Lemon Island. That's, I read that in the paper today, in one of the papers today. I don't know the truth, but it sounds reasonable to me that that's what they would do.
So I think translating that into clean-blood English, those that are, that choose not to leave are on their own.
Yes, sir.
If, once the winds get 39 miles, is it 39 or 35?
Sustained.
Sustained, it is. Is it 39 or 35?
37.
Once, once the winds, the storm winds come, our personnel are prohibited from helping you if you, if you get in trouble, so.
Make sure they go down with the press release without this and the NICSIL.
All right. Everybody be safe. Godspeed.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we are drawing.
All right. All in favor, say aye.